And welcome to the Joint Troy City Council and Planning Commission's special meeting for October 24th, 2016. Nice to be back with the Planning Commission on a study session. If we could have the roll call, Ms. Dixon?
May I ask later?
Here.
Councilmember Abraham?
Here.
Councilmember Baker?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Holterich?
Here.
Councilmember Cowell?
Here.
Mayor Proton Huntington?
Here.
Chairman Edmonds?
Here.
Mr. Epikian?
Here.
Ms. Cruz?
Here.
Mr. Faison?
Here.
Mr. Hudson?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Sanzika?
Here.
Mr. Tagle?
Here.
All present.
Yes.
That's an indicator as to how important this study session is. And we quickly want to go to the presentation and we want to leave, we're hoping, a half an hour for discussion. We think that that's going to be warranted this evening. Just quickly, the purpose that we're here today is to listen to this presentation, ask questions, and we are looking for consensus tonight whether to move forward or not with this project. It's really that simple tonight. So having said that, I'm going to turn this meeting over to City Manager Brian Kishnik.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council, Planning Commission. This is the stop and checkpoint. When we started in June, Bob Gibbs has been the consultant with his team, and Matt Farrell's been the consultant. I was pointing to Matt over here in the sense, ooh, Matt Farrell from CORF is the other part of this team, and they've done a great job. This is a progression of many meetings, stakeholders, now here with the Planning Commission and the City Council. There've been four iterations, two iterations, now one example of what's, or one plan that Bob is going to show you tonight. So this isn't just something that we came to right now. This is something for everyone to be proud of and know that a lot of people were involved. But it's just a stopping point. It's just to check where we are and get your feedback from two of the more, from the most important groups in the planning area for the city of Troy. So this is something called our opportunity to talk about and provide a walkable urban town center downtown, if you will. And Bob Gibbs is going to give the presentation.
Thanks, Brian. We've really been delighted to work with you on this site. It's about 100, 120 acres in size. It includes lots of civic buildings, a library, City Hall, police, and courthouse. We don't get to work with many buildings. They have all these civic uses on them. We're proposing a mixed-use walkable town center that will include all the existing civic buildings, plus residential and restaurants and shops and details. We did a market study and found that conservatively, the site can support 286,000 square feet of retail and restaurants, generating in retail sales almost $94 million a year in sales. We're proposing about half of that. We're conservatively proposing about 180,000 square feet of retail. The retail may or may not happen as we're proposing it. If not, we're recommending that the buildings be designed to accommodate some residential on the first level in case the retail's not allowed to go there. To put that in perspective, we're proposing a center that's half the size of Village of Rochester. So I know you may not know how big 180,000 square feet is. We're something that's about half the size of the Village of Rochester. We did the master plan for the Village of Rochester about 15 years ago. We did a market study and found that you can support 1,000 new residential units by 2021, or about 200 units a year. The market analysts projected very high rents and very high asking price, with the average asking price being $278,000 per year, or $273 a square foot. And I'm sure you've got a copy of the study, but the analysts said this was one of the strongest infill sites they've ever seen. And we're proposing what we call cottage homes. These are small lot cottage homes. We're proposing townhomes. And we're proposing mid-rise multifamily. Many of it would have retail on the first level. We're proposing all in all, you can't see that, but we're proposing 850 new residential dwellings, 25 cottage homes, 100 townhomes, and 725 mid-rise homes. So we're proposing about 850 new dwellings on the site. To put this in perspective, that's about a third of the size of the Somerset Apartments. They're about three times bigger. The site is about 100, 120 acres in size. Here's the library, City Hall, police station, post office, and you have Hubener Park on the north end. North is to the left here. You have Hubener Park, you have the tennis courts, and the water park, and the community center to the north. And there's an existing creek bed that snakes through the site. We took a lot of pride in respecting the creek bed and respecting the existing buildings in Hubener Park as much as we could. In fact, after we respected all of those, the site just sort of designed itself. We're proposing an additional park. We're proposing a park up here with a five acre lake in it. We're proposing a small square in front of City Hall on Big Beaver Road, another east-west small square. We're proposing modifying the creek bed to go here. Right now, it snakes over here. We're proposing moving it there. And then we're proposing moving the water park and the tennis courts. These sit in prime, developable property, and we're recommending that those be relocated slightly but kept on-site. Our residential development and retail development are shown in bubble diagrams, basically in brown. This is our master plan, and the master plan is in front of you. We're proposing a north-south, east-west square through the middle. The red buildings are new mixed-use buildings with retail on the first level. The brown buildings are residential, all residential buildings, and the blue buildings are the existing civic buildings. We're able to keep all of the existing civic buildings where they are, the police, the library, the City Hall, and courthouse. We are proposing a placeholder for a future civic building to be determined in the park. We heard from the stakeholders that they really felt the new park should have a civic building in it. Some of them felt it should be a library. We're not ready to decide what that civic building will be. So we feel the civic building should be in the most important site. It's located at the terminus, at the end of the square, and on the lake. We're proposing a five-acre new lake, which is necessary for stormwater retention. The yellow are cottage homes. We're proposing a trail system and improvements to Hubener Park, moving the aquatic center into Hubener Park, and then moving the tennis courts up here so that they can share on the parking at the community center, and then the new civic center there. This is just a blow-up of the new park that we're proposing. This is Liver Noise Road. We're proposing a new park here with a five-acre pond in it, and then the future civic building. This is a really fabulous site for a new civic building because it's an important site terminating this view, and it's on the lake, and it's in the middle of the park. So we don't know what the civic center will be. It could be a library. It could be a performing arts center. It could be a cultural, a new cultural center. We don't know what. It may not be decided for generations from now. But traditional urban planning is to put the civic center in the most important spot. We are using a block system, and the blocks can be developed either as these cottage homes, a mixture of townhomes and cottage homes, all townhomes, or mid-rises. So you'll see there's a number of blocks around here, and the blocks are sized in such a way that they could be multiple uses. This is an isometric view of the town center. This is our square. Here's the new civic center. Here's the five-acre lake. Here's the cottage homes. Here's Hubener Park, the new aquatic center. And we're proposing an eight-story hotel on I-75 right into the town center, so that you could check into the hotel and then walk around and enjoy the town center. Here's the library. These are additions where we've left room, so that the courthouse, the library could be added on to should that ever be necessary. And then here's the future civic building. And then just a blow-up of that detail. The white buildings are residential buildings. The red buildings are mixed-use with retail on the first level, and then the blue are existing and future civic buildings. This is a view of the new square. This is looking east at the new civic building, which we don't know what it's going to be yet. And the square is about 90 feet wide from inside a tree to inside a tree, lined with shops on both sides, and then a street on both sides of the square. And we're proposing four-story buildings along both sides of the square with three-story residential on top of retail. Now, should the retail not be developed, should it not be feasible for a developer to do it, these could be mostly residential, right down to the ground level. The square is modeled after the Cranbrook Gardens. This is the art center and library at Cranbrook. Our square would be about 25 feet wider than this. We are recommending the same tree. They have horse chestnut trees, which are beautiful trees. They give very beautiful flowers, and it's a very nice urban tree. So this is roughly the image that we have in mind for the square, except it'll be slightly wider, and it'll be lined with street on both sides, and then this would be the place of the civic center. We are recommending that you install a fountain. We like the fountain to be roughly the size of the fountain in Birmingham. This is Birmingham's fountain. And we're placing it at the end of the square, right in front of the civic building. This is an example of the multi-story, four-story buildings. We are proposing that many of the buildings have the corners cut to be at an angle. That makes for an interesting block and more walkable area and a nice building because you have windows on the corner. Some of the buildings will have retail with residential above. Here's the view of the square again. This is I-75. Here's the master plan. Okay. Larry?
Yep. Okay. Bye. I'll leave it. Thank you. Hi, everyone. My name's Larry Goss. I'm part of the core team. I actually head up the, we're in the Development Services Division. Of course, Matt's here, CEO of CORF, and also John Bozoni, part of our development team. And our role was to try to put some numbers on that plan. It's a beautiful plan. It's an exciting plan. Our role was to take that plan and put some economic reality to it. So we provided you with these little books, which has a few tabs in it. You don't need to necessarily open them right now, but they're there for you. There's a three, four-page executive summary that describes our methodology, that describes some of the assumptions that we had to make. And so what I wanted to do tonight, since we want to have as much discussion as possible, is really give you the headlines of what came out of our analysis. We did a very deep dive on the project, and what that means is we took every single building and determined the square footage of that building, determined the type of construction of that building, and applied financial metrics to it. So when you do that, and by the way, as well as the infrastructure, all the roads that were involved, and we made some assumptions on infrastructure because some of that still needs some analysis. When you do that, you come up with this information. And the way we broke this down, if you look at just on the orange part, is basically what a developer would be looking at. The developer's vertical and infrastructure costs, plus their land cost, about $29 million, comes to a total of roughly $357 million. That's become the taxable value of the property for the city of Troy going forward. There's some demolition that needs to be done. There's some infrastructure that needs to be done. We saw it taking place in at least two phases. So we broke down phase one and two of the demolition and infrastructure. Some of that demolition is rerouting roads, putting them in the right place. Some is related to older facilities that we have to get out of the way. So you've got some demolition and infrastructure costs. We also have a number here for off-site improvements, and that came from talking with staff and consultants that work for staff. There's some sewer upgrades and some traffic improvements that are going to be eventually necessary, not necessary day one, though. But we put them in here just to kind of keep an eye on that off-site cost. That brings you to $28 million for total city infrastructure. The new civic buildings that are described on the plan total roughly $21.5 million. This does not include the future civic building because, as Bob said, that may come a decade from now. So we did not include that, although it is in your book. There's a price in it. There's a lot of questions that need to be answered before you really know what the value of that building is going to be. But the new civic buildings that are, other than the future building, $21.5 million, we added some finance costs to that, so you have a total civic investment of roughly $53 million. We backed out of that the land purchase from the developer, roughly $29 million. And we did actually a 20-year tax analysis on the property based on the value of the property, depreciation schedule, your millage rates, and we calculated a 20-year tax collection at full buildout of $35 million. If you add these two together, you've got $65 million essentially in revenue coming in from the city and a civic investment of $53 million, leaving you with a net, at this snapshot, of roughly positive nearly $12 million. I know I ran through that real quick, but again, I think it's the headlines. One thing that we were talking about before the meeting that you might want to keep in mind is this is a 20-year tax collection. A town center like this has a 50-year to 100-year lifespan. So we didn't program that in because we just needed to take a snapshot of the economics of it, but you could expect that there would be, you know, ongoing tax from the value of the properties. So with that, I guess that's the summary of the economics. Again, more detail is in your book with more granular level of analysis, and there's even further granular analysis. If you had more questions, we'd be happy to try to answer those for you. Okay?
Just a clarification, Matt, you want to clarify?
So clarification on the civic building up there, where it says new civic buildings, I think better stated is renovated civic buildings. It does not include the new future civic, physical structure.
Yep. So now, Mayor, we've entertained any questions, and Bob, Larry, and Matt are certainly well close to this.
Thank you. Yeah, that was my first question was, when we were talking about leaving the old buildings, most of the pushback that I've heard from you there is that the buildings are getting old and they need, but from what I was told earlier today, you factored in making those buildings almost new again.
Renovating.
Renovating.
Renovating. If necessary, maybe a budget for expanding, like expanding the library a little bit.
It does include moving the aquatic center, so that essentially is a new construction. We put a number in there for that as well.
The figure's in there for the new tennis facility and aquatic center.
That's right. And by the way, we went back to the people who built your original aquatic center to find out and get some numbers from them on upgrading or actually creating a new aquatic center, is the source of those documents.
Thank you. Let's try to be orderly, but who wants, who wants to be first? Karen.
Okay. So on the aquatic center, it's been my understanding that the aquatic center is not self-sufficient in terms of taking care of itself with maintenance and whatever, and that we've opened it up to people that live outside the city of Troy, which has resulted in many problems at the aquatic center. So my question is, is that something that we still want to have? You know, are we willing to invest the money to move the aquatic center if it can't financially sustain itself? And if we were going to do that, would it be under the same rules as today? Meaning, anybody can come into the aquatic center, or would it just be limited to the people who live here and work here like it was at one time? Because I'm saying, I'm thinking that's something we could live with, without, under the economics as it currently is. And then the same with the tennis courts. I noticed in your drawing, there were eight courts where there are now currently 12, and it's part of a lease situation with a private citizen. And if we change it, does it now become property of the city, and is it run by the city? Is it a city amenity?
We probably took an artist license. There, we can accommodate the 12 courts, if you wanted that. We just kind of drew them in. We can accommodate. But the lease is on 2018.
Yeah. And at least my understanding is that we currently own the property, and we leased the property today. So it's our property. We just leased it out. We could do the same thing if we moved the site. So it's not like whoever runs that does not own it.
No, I understand. I'm just saying, do we want to? Is that something that we want to do? Just like, do we want to invest the money to move the aquatic center? Does it economically make sense, given the fact it doesn't sustain itself? And it seems to be fraught with issues as it's currently managed.
I think those are issues that you might want to talk about down the line, so to speak. We talked a little bit about that in a pre-meeting. The hotel is actually going to be, is proposed on that site for the aquatic center, and I'm just talking out loud.
Me, too.
I'm sure a hotel that would want to come and have probably the best spot in the city of Troy would maybe move that for us and build us a new one.
So you could shift that cost, shift that expense, is what you're saying? Okay, okay.
Much like the group across the street, they became partners with the city and helped with the dog park.
Absolutely.
So, you know, I see a little bit of that, that possibility, too.
Well, I think that's a great idea, if you're going to keep it.
I can tell you, I get a lot of emails about the aquatic center, and most of them are to keep it, that it's an asset to the city. And I think we get a lot of pushback, you know, just from my perspective, but, you know, I think what was told to me earlier today is a lot of this can be moved around, a lot of it can be changed. Nothing's etched in stone this evening. It's not like it has to be this way. Tom, do you have one question?
Well, I think it's a grand plan, personally. I love it. Just one quick question. Will the skate park be moved to another park location?
We weren't planning, we were not planning that. We were planning on keeping it where it is.
Oh, I didn't see it there.
Yeah, we just did a drive. Is there? Your Proton Huntington?
Those look like parking decks, but you didn't go over parking. Can you go over that quickly?
Yes, we are proposing a few parking decks. Parking decks between these two blocks here. That would allow these to be residential on top of retail, a one-level parking deck for the hotel, and a parking deck here for the civic, where you currently have your civic lot. The parking deck would be shared with the City Hall and the library. Did I miss any?
Yes, literally.
One here, one here for this development. These sites could, if the hotel were smaller, this could be developed without the parking deck. That could be developed without parking deck. If you want to just retail, these could be without the parking deck. The city, we need, we need this real estate. We're proposing a small square with some shops around the square in front of the City Hall, and so we would need a deck to accommodate that and to accommodate a parking deck.
So I got a follow-up question with that. I was in Ann Arbor recently, and they had an underground parking deck that they recently installed. What's your thoughts on that?
As a planner, I love they have underground parking decks, but they're about three times as expensive as above-ground decks. So we want to be conservative, but if you, if you wanted to fund them, it'd be great to have, but usually they're just not affordable in suburban locations.
John?
Yeah. We had a lot of discussion about the existing buildings. This building being too big for what's needed to be added, the library being well out of step with what current library design is. Can you help us, take us from how we got from that discussion to those buildings being kept and spending the money to remodel and put additions on?
We all felt that that's probably a couple of decisions away from the plan. So we wanted to come up with a framework plan that allowed for future civic use as a placeholder. And that could be a new City Hall. You could do a new City Hall here. It could be a new performing arts center. Could be, it could be a new library. We don't know. So as a planner, I wanted to leave a place for a future civic use, and then you can decide that in the future. It may be a generation away. It may be sooner. It's a very prime piece of real estate, and I think it should be reserved for a civic use. You'll have a lot of developers offering you a lot of money there to put condos and apartments on that site, and it's too important of a site for private use. It's on a lake. It's on your square, and we thought it was really important that it be a civic, zero for civic use.
Can I follow up? How much square footage does that building currently show, the future civic center, and what would you max it out at?
Two stories, approximately 40,000 square feet.
So that's going to limit what can go there. Library can go there at 40,000 square feet. I mean, it's, the current library's over 40,000 square feet now. I don't know what the square footage of this building is.
Are you sure that two stories combined are 40?
It's each floor, it's 40,000 square feet.
Two-story, 8,000. Yep. 8,000.
And it's just a placeholder in this diagram, although I like the shape of it. It could be larger. Could be smaller, it could be larger. Yes.
Thank you. Ali?
I have a question about the off-site improvement cost that you have in here for $15 million. Is that the access under the I-75 as you showed on the master plan? And also, does that include significant improvements to the access at Big Beaver and Civic Center to provide direct access from eastbound traffic?
I have that answer. So those off-site improvements, let me explain really quick what's happening. With our engineer, our city engineer, we've engaged both engineering firms, HRC and OHM. OHM looks at the traffic. So what's happening is we have cumulative development happening along Big Beaver. We have 19 projects somewhere in the works, and we're going to anticipate potential improvements of Big Beaver. Now, we haven't really looked into this in greater detail because we don't, we need to know what type of intensity we're going to have. And once, after we get the consensus, we can start looking at it. We also have a very large sanitary sewer going down John R. to the Great Lakes Water Authority line, and we're investigating that line. We've metered it. We're in the process of metering it. It might be clogged up, but we think eventually that's going to have to be replaced. Now, both of those improvements include, because of the site, but also off-site. So they're not directly attributed only to the town center. And we don't know what the answers are yet because we have not given them the authority to figure it out until we know what the scope and scale of the potential project.
I don't know.
And, oh, you're answering one question. No, it did not include the cost of the bridge or tunnel over I-75.
If it doesn't include the bridge or tunnel, is this site sustainable, that buildup, without that access point?
It is. It is. But we think it's worth studying instead of widening Big Beaver, to look at creating more of a network. So we recommend that we look at a network. Widening Big Beaver will induce more traffic to use Big Beaver, not necessarily solve your problem. So we'd like to see a network.
And I've had considerable discussions with our, with our city engineer about this and our traffic engineer, and they do believe it's not necessary to have that access. It would be nice to have, but they don't believe that it's needed to serve the site.
Furthermore, there's been historic debate and discussion around an ultimate ring road coming through with Wilshire, and that connection point is a plus from that standpoint, from the long-term planning, and just as a release belt for the growth. The density of this project could increase far beyond what we've proposed, based on the success of the project. That's to be determined. And with MDOT and the spend being done on I-75 right now, it's seen optimal to put it in illustration and create conversation around it.
If actual, if the access under I-75 is too much for the city to...
If actual, if the access under I-75 is too much for the city to actually absorb or in the development, have you considered, or is it feasible or realistic to just put a pedestrian access under I-75 to neutralize sites for future development?
Yes, it is. I would do a pedestrian bridge rather than a tunnel. That's right.
Pardon?
There were several things that we wanted during the retreat. One of them was the performing arts center, one of them is the market. Can you speak a little bit about the market? And I have a second question, which is, what happened to the baseball diamond and the soccer field that are there where the pond is right now? Do we have spaces for the typical sports activities that we have here on the Civic Center property?
What we heard from the stakeholders, what I heard, was that you definitely wanted to have a, you wanted to park here, you wanted the civic building to be on the lake. And there was a lot of discussion about having a drive, the street go right into the heart of this. We couldn't do it through here because we're keeping all the civic buildings. So the intent was to have the drive go right into the middle. We have not been planning for baseball diamonds and basketball courts and things like that. We would have to remove some of the development to do that. We're using up most of the property to be at right now. There is room in here where we could put, in the wooded area, we could cut the woods down and put in a baseball diamond or something that I'd rather keep the wood reserved there that you have.
Possible market up here.
Thank you now about that. We are proposing a market up here. This would be something about the size of a plum market, maybe a 20,000-square-foot market with some retail. We found a strong demand for a small grocer here on the site. The grocer would either want to locate on Big Beaver or Liver Noise. I think they'd rather locate on Liver Noise. And having a walkable market that residents can walk to is very popular right now. Studies indicate that people pay 12% more for their apartments if they can walk to a grocery store, to shops. So we felt it's important to do it from here. If you'd rather not have the market there, we could put residential there. But I think it makes a much more sustainable community if we can walk to a market and walk to a little grocery store.
Ethan?
We looked at numbers just a little bit, and it looks like, as a breakdown of projections, it's revenue-neutral, at least actually positive for the city over time, which is, I think, is important and important to the citizens and taxpayers of the city, certainly to me. My question is, assuming we have the census tonight to move forward with whatever that means, what exactly does that mean?
When do we know if those numbers actually, I mean, if there's demand and interest? I think you could probably speak about this a little bit.
Absolutely. So from this point going forward, as we said, this jumping off point, if you will, if this plan is satisfying the majority of the constituency's ideas and intent, that we move forward in this plan and close-door sessions to create the marketing component, the execution model, how we're going to propose it, land leasing, potential items of sale, so on and so forth, pricing strategy, so that on December 5th and 6th, Larry, myself, and the team are in ICSD in New York promoting this to developers and international development community. So that is the proposed intent from this plan.
What was that date again?
December 5th and 6th at ICSD in New York.
Just a follow-up question on that. So when you present this plan, is it the whole plan? Or is there maybe pieces and parts that could be developed without the whole plan being adopted?
It's a great question. I don't know that we have the perfect answer, but I'll give you my gut instinct. My gut instinct right now is to paint a picture of the totality of the benefit of what exists today and why a large developer or a magnitude developer could come in here and take advantage of the infrastructure already of this, i.e. the civic buildings, the Marriott, the office community, the traffic counts on Big Beaver, the traffic counts on I-75, the visibility, so on and so forth. We all know, sitting here in this room, the merits of the site. But to promote the merits of the site with a somewhat rubber-stamped endorsed master plan by the municipality saying that this is reality, they endorse it, they promote it, and they would like to see you come in and do this. Sustainability-wise, my personal desire would be to see multiple developers come to roost because developers often have niches and specialties. And we'd hate to see one group not get to the culmination. But at the same token, given the size and the quality of the community, it's hard to determine. You may have one very large group that is not otherwise in southeast Michigan that will be willing to come in, given the merits of the demographics, and do the entire job, according. So I think Bob and I both feel that it's too premature to tell.
Yeah.
And we'll know more in December when we get in front of the community.
So this is designed with a series of blocks so that actually different developers, smaller developers, could develop each block or half of each block, just like in a real city where you have lots. If you have multiple developers, it becomes more interesting because you have different architects and different designs. And it has a little more authentic feel of a real place rather than a developed town center.
And then I think you made a comment earlier that there's potentially more density that could be developed on this site. So I'm just curious as when you say that, what?
So the studies that were commissioned by Bob and his group to do overall took the current aspects of the city of Detroit and created a residential demand density report. This project of its magnitude changes those demographics considerably. If we become the most sought-after area of southeast Michigan and start really drawing that walkable urban development community and satisfying these price points, the demand will change that report. That report could prove out a lot more potential vertical growth. We're not saying today that that's high probability. We're looking at it saying, given the studies, we're inside the parameters of those capacities and creating something that's architecturally appealing, size and scale appealing, satisfying all the different use components, but also knowing, as Brian has stated a few times, it's only an eraser away from a change. It's only an eraser away from saying that this may not satisfy the market demand, but swapping that block out with something else may.
Okay.
And so there's changes that can take effect in the project. That said, it's going to be critical to the success of the project, and Bob and I are in complete agreement on this, that the access points coming in and the main thoroughfare is in and the establishment of the square and that intent is critical to create the nucleus and create the core of the development. The extremities could change.
The real estate advisor that we use estimated that your residential values are high enough that you could justify some underground parking. So it's possible that some of these could be underground parking even. They found really high values. I do want to put this in though, that it's important, and we're going to write a form-based code for this, we're going to work with Dick Carlisle and write a code for this, it's important that in order for this to be walkable, that there be certain musts, the blocks should only be so large, the parks should be there, there are certain elements that really need to be here, otherwise you just end up with a lot of density and really nothing very nice. And so the trade-off of building 850 homes and 180,000 square feet of retail is that it really does have to be walkable and you have to have a certain balance of squares and parks. And it'd be easy just to say, well, let's get rid of this and save a million dollars, and let's get rid of this and save a million dollars. And you just shouldn't do that in a plan like this. And we're going to work with the city staff to make sure that you don't do that.
You're going to save us from ourselves?
Well, I worry more about the developers that are going to come in and say, you know, look how smart you are, I'm going to save you a half million dollars, but I'm going to get rid of your park. And I've seen that happen, and it's tempting.
Edna, did you?
Yeah, I had two questions. One is, how much area of Huber Park is now going to be allocated to the Aquatic Center on that plan? And then the other question I had was, could you comment a little bit about phase one and phase two and how those phases were determined?
Technically, Huber Park ends right about here.
Okay.
Legally. So we're staying completely out of Huber Park. These woods are, as I understand it, are outside of the park. But to answer your question, the Aquatic Center is about?
Five acres.
Five acres in size. But we took a lot of care to stay out of Huber Park. We're just in the wooded area. And then for the phasing, we recommend that you build the square first, but the fountain, having the square, having the horse chestnut trees there makes everything else more valuable. And a lot of these developers build the square, cities build the square, they build the public realm, and then that makes it more desirable. I have had some where they built a public realm last, which doesn't make sense because they sold everything at a discount because it didn't have the public realm. And then they built a public realm, and then everybody that bought something, you know, got a huge premium. So we really want to see this square built first, some of the street network, and we'll work on that. This creek has to be rerouted. Right now, the creek goes right through here. And we really tried hard not to reroute it, but it would have cost a lot of real estate. It would have really affected the square. So we're going to recommend that this piece of the creek be rerouted. We're keeping all the rest of this natural the way it is right now.
Don?
Yeah, I just wanted, have you talked with the Troy School District about the influx of 850 homes into the district? You know, what capacities they're at now?
No.
Okay.
Most of these are going to be homes geared for people without children. Of which you have a lot of people in Troy without children right now. A lot of millennials and empty nesters.
I was actually just going to comment, we had our joint meeting with the school board maybe two weeks ago, and I asked a question similar to that, and I talked about new development. Dr. Wachesky said that there is ample room in the schools to have an increase, but then coupled with, hopefully only 25% of new housing in Troy will have families with children anyway. So it's not as big of an influx as you think.
Go ahead, Dylan.
That future civic building that's going to be part of that realm, if you will, where does that discussion happen? When you go December 5th and 6th, would developers perhaps provide input and ideas? We've had the gut instinct, based on experience, living here, about this cultural need for Performing Arts Center. That's truly gut. That's just what it feels like when we see the auditoriums and the high schools competing for space. Would they look at something like that? Did you look at that?
Every developer we represent this to is going to say, I want to build condos here. And someone's going to have to be a gatekeeper to make sure that stays civic. I think it's a whole process for the city to decide what that is. You know, maybe somebody will say, I'll donate the Performing Arts Center if you put my name on it. You know, maybe you'll decide that you want to move one of your existing civic buildings there. I don't know. But as a planner, I always take the most important site and set it aside as a civic building. I think that's the way it should be.
I guess just a follow-up would be, I would like help thinking that through. You know, regionally, are we on track with that line of thought? And if we're not, let's abandon it and look at another thought. But I'd like to really thoughtfully and pragmatically explore that idea and either, you know, somewhat embrace it or let it go so other ideas can come in.
We can help you with that. It's on a lake, it's on a square, it's on a fountain. It's really a beautiful site. It would be really wonderful for the community to use that and look at the lake, look at the fountain, and look at the square. This is right out of what they call the City Beautiful Planning Movement from the 1910s. This is technically a City Beautiful Plan that we're creating. We borrowed this from a planner named John Nolan, my favorite planner. He did the Birmingham Civic Plan, and this is reflective of the John Nolan Plan. Birmingham City Hall and Library, those were houses. And the city bought six blocks of houses and tore them down in the 1920s and built Shane Park and the City Hall and Library. They built a City Beautiful Plan. This is a City Beautiful Plan. I think this will be one of, I think this square will be one of the most beautiful settings in southeast Michigan. I think you'll see postcards and weddings taking place here.
Your thought process on performing arts is strong and very good because for those that have been down to downtown Detroit and done the district tours with villages and so on and so forth, one of their biggest brag sessions is that Detroit has more theaters, entertainment venues, and so on and so forth, per capita, in a small Detroit walkable setting than any other major on the state and country. And they're using that as a big, big, to bring that direction internationally into the city.
John?
You have two questions. Bob, for you, is that civic building part of phase one?
No.
No, just the site, just the lake should be part of phase one because it would be stormwater for all the other sites.
Pass the walkway and the infrastructure around.
And then it should be just built out as a land bank.
Why wouldn't that be part of phase one?
Could be.
Cost?
I mean, that's really up to you. I mean, I'd love to see it part of phase one because it would make every one of these condos and apartments more valuable, and it would fill my restaurants, the restaurants were, not my restaurants. Restaurants we're proposing. I mean, it would be really awesome to make it part of phase one, but we weren't so presumptuous to do that.
Matt, for you, the numbers you've got in here, are they 2016 numbers? Is there any inflation built into these?
Those are current, in place right now, 2016.
So as we move forward, these numbers are going to increase on the size of the ledger?
Yes, possibly, or possibly not. Because I would tell you, 2016 numbers when it comes to construction are probably as high as we've seen them historically, and I would justify one of the biggest reasons is the growth and what's happening down in the city of Detroit with the new stadium. We're actually delaying some projects until 18 in order to get through the August 2017 opening of the Wing Stadium. Because so much labor and materials have been sucked out of this town into that development.
Yeah, I understand that.
So pricing is actually marginally.
I believe that we're going to continue to see a rise, maybe not at the same rate as we've seen it with this large of a development. But there's a lot of development that's going to continue to grow around that arena down there, which is going to continue to.
Which is going to continue, correct. Great question, John.
Five more minutes, but I think Edna asked a question about phase one and phase two. You could just talk why, about those.
By the way, this is the future civic building that we just put in as a placeholder. Here's the square again. So this is about, the square is about 25 feet wider than the one at Cranbrook. If you want to go visit Cranbrook Square, get a sense of the size. I'm sorry.
Well, I heard that phase one was, you wanted to, that's the civic center with the fountain, but what else would be part of phase one?
Well, there's a couple of phase ones and phase twos.
Okay.
Just to make it a little more confusing. In the back of your tab three, we have the demolition, phase one and phase two that I referenced. Of phase three. Phase one demolition in that respect is getting some things out of the way, realigning the creek, getting there some parking lots, that sort of thing. Essentially, what we talked about was getting, as was mentioned before, getting the skeleton in place for phase one. And then phase two would include the appendages. That's our thinking right now, but there's more thinking that needs to take place on that.
I have a quick one. So say consensus is reached, like how long would it take to execute?
Well, the whole plan I see as a 10, 15-year plan.
And from a marketing standpoint, if we're in New York having conversations promoting the project with authority to do so in December, we could come out with legitimate interest there, or we could come out with a list of phone numbers and names that we're going to be attacking for the next 12 months. Either which way, it's hard to tell.
The retail market, the housing market study said you could absorb 1,000 units in five years. And we're proposing 850. So technically, you could absorb all the housing in four years here.
Thank you. Given the analytics in southeast Michigan right now and the financing market that exists, I would almost venture to say that 10 out of 10 developers, if you say, I have a piece of land for you at Big Beaver and 75 that would accommodate mixed use and multifamily development, they're 10 out of 10 hands up. The question is how much they will spend.
Yeah. Just a question on the financial page. That kind of goes back to what John was saying about inflation adjustment, et cetera. So these are kind of dollars in and dollars out, it looks like. Look at this page. But at different points in time?
So snapshot.
And I was curious, so do you do any kind of present value analysis when you look at those dollars in and dollars out?
We haven't looked at it yet from a present value standpoint. Obviously, from a sense of building the execution model from this point on, that's part of that strategy of what makes sense today versus what makes sense 12-month, 24-month, 36-month. But also, it doesn't even become relevant until after we have a fish on the hook.
Understood.
So a few parties are helping driving that vision, if you will, and buying into the program. As of this point in time, it is an absolute snapshot. We close our eyes, we wake up the next day, and it all exists. What did we spend? And what did we? What did we spend, and what did we have to fund versus the marketplace delivered? And that's the way it's looked at right now.
So do you do that present value analysis?
As of this point, no. In the future, yes. Yep, through the basing process.
Any other questions?
Don?
Yeah, I just have two questions. Can you expand on what you plan to do with the current library?
Yes. We are showing the current library in light blue, and we're reserving places for the library to be added onto. So that's our plan right now. There was a lot of talk about moving the library over there, so we have a place we've set aside that if you chose you wanted a library there, it could be there. Right now, we're keeping the library where it is, and then we left room. For example, I'd like to see an addition here so that looking down the street, it terminates the view into the library. So you see the library from the end of the street.
Tell me, the way that the plan is currently designed, will this require a vote of the taxpayers?
So before Lori speaks, let me just preface it. Because Lori's only been involved with an A-lean, is A-lean still there? So to put together an overlay of this, if you will, because there are lots of, there are several restrictions in various places which dictates how this plan comes out. So this, and just correct me when I'm wrong, but this all has to be reserved for recreation and open space. So that is why you see the lake here and the library being recreation or of public use, if you will. Huber Park has to be reserved 10 acres for open space and recreation. Is it recreation or just open space, Lori?
No, it's recreation.
Recreation. So, and we may have a little issue up here that we have to address through the park's master plan, as it being labeled a park, and therefore that would require a vote of the people. But as we understand it, based on what they've put together, the city attorney and the city clerk, this wouldn't require a vote, other than the lease, if it's longer than three years, would require, would allow a referendum, right, Lori?
Yeah. And yeah, there is, of course, a right of referendum for anything that's longer than three years. And again, this is not, you know, we had the parcel, so we did our legal analysis and the restrictions based on the actual parcel, and I don't have that overlay. So I can't answer definitively. I can tell you that, you know, that the north part of Huber Park is going to be restricted, and you can't use that, but it is only the 10 acres. I think that the condo, the brown and the cottage homes, those are actually, right now, what we would consider Huber Park. You know, but that is, there's really nothing that gives a legal description of it, so most people would think of that. So that may, may require at least a change to the park's and rec master plan, if not a vote of the people.
And based on the current maturing bonds on the parcel for the community center, this is likely a phased later component as well, awaiting for the maturity of those bonds.
This is one of the times I'm so grateful I'm not an elected official. Because I can just hear pushback that's going to come from people when they hear about this in detail.
Thanks, Don.
Right there where the Huber Park is next to the subdivision, you've got a house that has nothing around it on the corner there, right? But yeah, that person there. So right now, the person that lives in that house is surrounded by trees, and that's going to be cleared in order to make space for the.
No, that's not true.
No. Okay, that's what I want to make, I mean, I.
The trees, we believe the trees end right about here. We're trying to keep the.
This is where the current tennis bubble is.
Okay, so that's the current, okay. But when I'm in that subdivision, if I'm at that little cul-de-sac and I look at that house, there are trees behind it, and I can see the tennis bubble through the trees. So there are trees that are there. It may not be part of Huber Park, but there are trees that are there. I'm saying, I'm hoping that the landscaping remains flexible enough so that you would not necessarily expose that house and take away all the trees. That tends to upset.
Those are mature trees there. Would you modify the plan to maintain them?
Yeah, there's enough space, we left enough setback from the actual property line that we could landscape it really on both sides. So on the current subdivision side of the end of the city.
Or just keep the trees there.
Yeah, yeah.
There could be trees.
Phil, quickly? I was curious, would that be a requirement for public financing of the infrastructure? Or do you anticipate the sale of land?
Great question. That comes up in the execution plan over the next 30 days of concepts, but really doesn't hit formality until after we have a fish on the hook and we're starting to negotiate reality. I could definitely see, given the parking deck creations, TIF, or other potential financing mechanisms to help create that infrastructure, but too premature to tell.
Thank you.
I think you said it right.
Go ahead.
This developers meeting, Matthew, you've mentioned a couple of times in December. Is this a once-a-year meeting or once a quarter?
So ICSA is the International Council for Shopping Centers. The largest show is in Vegas in May of each year. The secondary show is in December in New York. So we are attending a large.
Trade show.
Trade show, if you will, as representatives of the city on behalf of the project, promoting it accordingly. But it is where most of your large mass mixed-use developers come to congregate to see their next projects.
But it's twice a year, though.
Twice a year.
Can we hit the rewind button with Lori for a second on the vote of the people? Because can you just clarify, what would have to go in front of the people to vote? Because I could see if it's something with regard to leases, you know, that could undo this entire deal, right?
Well, the leases, it's a right of referendum. So right of referendum means that whoever is challenging it has a very short, limited period of time within which to get an item on the ballot. So there is that right, and long-term leases, anything that's three years and over, and we've had that in effect, it's part of our charter. So we do have that requirement.
And a lease of three years or longer would be just about any piece of property on that site, correct?
Well, we don't know yet how it's all going to work out. We may do, I mean, the form-based code was something that was, you know, thrown out as a way to control kind of what's there as well. But yeah, there will be somehow, if you're going to have a developer, they're going to want their own property, so it's going to be a sale or a lease, probably.
The discussion earlier was that a land lease of 100 years may apply to a hotel, but a sale of a land would probably like for condominiums or housing. Nobody wants to buy a house on a piece of property that they don't own.
To further that conversation, though, as, you know, as we start to develop these things and people start to put money in projects together based on what they see on this plan, and then if we have a situation where, let's say, the hotel is not, we just can't do it because, you know, somebody puts it on a ballot and it gets voted down, you know, what does that do to the entirety of the plan?
That's a great question. And I think it's the hopes of the promotional team and the team that's going out to broadcast this, is that we do try to control the overall project as a master plan or the PUD or something that allows the green light permission within certain level of parameters. So that you're not back at the table with every negotiation and starting to stop. That in itself would be the detriment of the project and could affect the sustainability of it overall.
Before we go around and look for consensus or not, Matt, would just ask you to, you've said this before, you said it earlier, if we want to stay a viable city.
Relevant.
Just give your little speech before.
Happy to. Thanks, Mayor. You know, having, my career has been buttered in the city of Troy for most of my professional career, and my expertise is office and institutional quality, office and high tech. That's my sweet spot. Larry oversees development for multifamily, industrial, you name it. John Pavone on mixed use. But you've got the whole breadth of our team, our history and our experiences that would share the following statement. City of Troy is at a pivotal point right now in its viability in southeast Michigan. We have new competitors today that we haven't seen in 50 years, and that is the city of Detroit has 148 million square feet of space, and they are filling it up at a rapid clip, putting significant dollars and renovating it, competing not at lower prices, competing at much higher prices. So parking is at 260 per month per space. When you put that in the average office user, it equates to $5 to $6 a square foot. Asking rates on office space and vertical spaces is $23 to $26, plus six, 32, plus other pass-throughs and CAM charges on buildings that are much more expensive to operate than some of the buildings in Troy. So tenants are making conscious decisions for multiple reasons. Walkability, recruiting, that's the biggest driver. Almost every company we talk to, technology, automotive, engineering, it's, I want the creativity, I want my future workforce, I can't find it, I'm competing for it every day, and I need to go to where they're willing to come work for me. And right now, that persona, not total reality, but that persona is to the south of here. That persona is not in Troy. And I think if asked of any major property owner in town, they would attest to that statement that they're competing with Detroit and Southfield and Birmingham and Rochester in a way much more than they ever had in the past.
Lori, a technical question here. When we're looking for consensus from a study session, is that from council?
Mayor, I think you could ask all of the members who are here, because obviously the planning commission is going to be involved in this as well, and especially, you know, with the planning that's going to be required.
I'll start out, you know, and please, let's get this done quickly. I would hope that everybody's made their mind up by now, because we are past deadline and we do have to still do public comment. So, you know, I'm just going to echo what Tom said from the beginning. I think it's a great project. I think it's absolutely needed for the city of Troy if we want to stay relevant, and I think it's worth progressing forward, my side. And let's go around.
Sure. Just.
No, no, we cannot vote. We can't vote, but I want to hear opinions, whether we have consensus or we don't. But we cannot take a vote.
So we're doing one by one?
Yeah. John, you're up.
Yeah, I think it's a great plan. I think there are still a lot of questions that need to be vetted, but what I'm seeing tonight, it looks like it's going in the right direction. But again, some things need to be developed.
I agree.
Ollie?
I agree as well. I think the plan has some flexibility built into it that tweaks and changes and additions can be made, and I think it would be an excellent asset for the city.
I agree.
I think we should move forward.
I think we should move forward.
Just a real quality piece of material that we can use to shop the city around, and what a great sense of place, so I'm in favor.
Emphatic, yes. Absolutely.
As a millennial, 110% yes.
Certainly, yes.
Yes, I think it's, I mean, lots of questions, like I said, and I don't want to get tied down to spending a bunch of money, but it's a great marketing piece, and I think go take it out there and sell it and see what happens, and we'll make a decision.
So my kids do not live in the city of Troy. They're both out of state, but, and they don't, when they talk about coming, they don't talk about coming, they move into city of Troy. They talk about Rochester, they talk about Ann Arbor. If I were to show them this, they would want to come to Troy.
Totally forward. Okay, great. I think we have consensus, move the project forward. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this item this evening? It's been a great meeting, what an accomplishment in one hour. Oh, did some, oh, please stand up and give us your name, please.
My name is Claire Hall, and I know you talked about squares, especially being a walkable area. Considering the residential areas that are also available, what are your thoughts on a bike front door?
If I could. Claire, this is not a question and answer session, it's just an opportunity for your voice and opinion during our rolls, but please do, if you, but we can't, it can't be a question and answer.
No, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Once again, it's a great meeting and accomplished a lot, and that was great comments. Thank you. We are adjourned. Thank you.